So he's a pink eye and I was like, yeah, we had one kid and he didn't have the regular pink eye. He had the viral pink eye. So his eye was swollen shut and the whole thing was swollen like somebody punched him in the eye. It was, it was black and blue. It was huge and his eye was totally closed.
Wow.
Yeah. That was the, I've never seen that one. That was the viral one. That one was swollen. Poor kid. He's almost out of it now.
You guys just sent him home after they're like that or what?
Oh, no, they can't.
Oh, okay.
They, if it's a regular.
Yeah.
Pink eye, they can't come back for, until they've had their drops for twenty-four hours. Cause after twenty-four hours in the drops, you're not contagious anymore.
It doesn't.
But before that, they were very contagious. Oh, pink eye is hard, so.
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad it's finally smelled.
Yeah.
Son, grandson came out and mowed the grass. The smell looks nice.
Where's that at?
My house.
Oh, yeah.
My grandson.
They did mine yesterday. I was like, wow.
We're recording.
It's been wet for two weeks.
Okay.
I touched it too soon. Sorry.
Cause you can't restart it, so.
I know. That's what the directions told me. I'm like, oh, I'll just start it.
The only thing about it is I like flowers and trees, but they all make me sneeze.
And this has been some serious pollen this year.
It's awful.
It is. It's like a super pollen.
I had a pine tree fell down and even though it's down, you shake it, the pollen goes, oh my god, it's like a yellow cloud.
Oh goodness.
They say if you're liking down in South Carolina where the big pines are, I guess they put your cars every year is just covered with it.
Oh, yeah. I heard about that and then it's like a thick, uh, cover dusting of yellow.
Yeah.
Everything.
Uh huh. It's just really thick and if you have.
If you have allergies, then you're.
Oh, you're just up the creek.
You are. Wow.
I've had allergy shots and everything, but it's still. I'd rather sneeze than be in the house often.
Yeah. Our decorative cherry didn't bloom this year. I don't know if it got frozen off or what.
What kind was it?
It's like a.
A cherry?
Yoshima.
Yes. I had a weeping cherry. The flowers froze. I had, just here and there.
Yeah, I had two.
Mm-hmm.
But the others must've got frozen off or something, I guess.
That week in December before Christmas is what I did it when it got so cold.
Oh, was it?
Mm-hmm. Some things can stand a certain amount, but.
Yeah, last year it bloomed like crazy, but this year nothing.
Some of the crabs have done well, but magnolias are just half and half.
Our magnolia blooms real good.
Did it?
All mine did too.
Did yours?
Hey Greg.
Cause it blooms so much, I thought about putting more out. Cause I had some flowering plum trees. I had five of them. They all died.
Just to let you know.
Cause I guess they only live ten, fifteen years or so, something like that. So I had them about eleven, twelve years. And slowly, like every year, one would die. So now the last one is dead.
Some of them like that can be strange like that. They live so long and it's.
So I'm gonna replace them all with magnolia bushes, cause those.
Evening Greg.
Hey there.
Hey Greg, how are you?
Walking before the meeting. Went walking out by the school.
Mm-hmm.
All their ash trees are pretty much dead.
Are they?
Yeah. All the, I don't know how many they have, but a lot of trees.
I was out there when I voted, but I didn't, I noticed it didn't look good, but they'd been fine too, but they might come out yet too.
Coming out a little bit, but they look like.
It's a little bit of goods. That was back when that stuff first started. It says, oh, these will be okay. I knew they wouldn't be. School board told us.
Chose those trees?
Hmm. Well, they came in when they did the add-on, back when they first finished, they had the elementary on to the high school and all that. They planted, I had a whole bunch of trees.
Yeah, it looked like they're pretty much, yeah, except a little bit.
You haven't passed your schedule yet?
Haven't seen anything. Hey Greg.
I've been looking for these for two weeks.
Where were they?
Well, I even came in here and checked one day, but they were all the way up near the curtain. My favorite pair of sunglasses.
Oh, you left them up here?
Yeah.
I always had trouble with sunglasses.
Well, my wife kinda says, you know, you need sunglasses that'll hide the big bushy eyebrows.
They look good.
I'm bad at sitting something in my lap and forgetting I got it there. Get out of the car and they fall to the ground. Which would be okay, you'd find them, but then you back up, you roll over.
Yeah. Well, thankfully, I, I figured they were up here, but when I came up and looked, they had some, they had dirty tables set up there. They had some event, right? So I snuck in, I look up here, I didn't turn the lights on. I don't see him, I don't see him, I didn't see them.
My son got me a pair of sunglasses. We went on vacation right after that and I lost them in the ocean. So I had to go try to find the same pair. So I didn't have to tell him I lost them right away.
I, I lost a pair fishing too.
You don't have any chairs up in here? What happened?
Ah, I guess we're not expecting a bunch of people. I don't know.
You don't realize how big it is? There's no chairs.
Yeah.
I told the mayor, I misspoke about when we're gonna have Tree City. It's not twenty-five, we won't have it in twenty-six. Nobody's scheduled next year. Springfield, they'd already asked for twenty-five. That's our fiftieth anniversary. Twenty-six, twenty-six would be nice. We're gonna have the fortieth anniversary.
Our date was rescheduled visit. Is there a date yet?
We haven't set a date yet. Yes, we got the tree last Wednesday, but it's been raining, it's wet ever since. We'll replace this one out here. Mason got it last Wednesday. Then I got two other ones. We replaced two that died on Jacob Lane down that way, so that all stay the same. We gotta.
Are we meeting this?
Yes, we need to. We need to decide, talk to your head, time about what, one's dying downtown, what are we gonna do?
I checked. Just a second ago, so we.
On the.
Make sure that's.
On the streets?
Mm-hmm.
There's some dying?
There's one in front of theaters dead. There's another one that she's not looking too good.
We just put brand new batteries in it. So I didn't want it to die.
I don't know how you get them out or what you do. And then we got a good bit, cause the street department did a lot of the work instead of us buying it out last year, so we got a lot of money. We got better spend it when we had to renew our thing, you know, to let us, that Greg talked about.
So we take the one out by the theater and this one go back in there?
Put something, we'll put something different.
I know they, she came to tree commission and didn't really want, or wanted us to do something about the roots and all that, so it might not want one back in there.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's important, that, those ones supposed to be that much, but it happens at times.
Those are provisions.
And we put them in ninety-nine, I believe. It's been, when they did downtown, we did everything. Because that's what we did for every day that you put all those in. But they stayed away from the buildings, what we did, but they got big, but then they kept planting stuff on top of more dirt and made the roots come up. That's what makes them on the top like that. But we're looking over, we're trying to get something else.
Did the tree commission put in those, the little fences?
No. City.
All the city.
You're talking about the little curb with, the curb with the electric you're talking about.
There's just the little fencing areas around the trees.
Oh, the black area, the black fences?
Yeah.
People who have those names on them, block them.
All they did, individuals.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I noticed a lot of towns have just that.
But that's hard.
It's ours kinda looks kinda.
They look nice and they're small, but then that, they get too big, then they overflow that. Mm-hmm. You think it's good at the time, but for so many years, and all of a sudden, boom, things get too big or. I like that one.
I was shocked.
Must've been. One of the planters called Celebration, part of it's a silver maple. And sometimes I think they graft them on. Sometimes I think they get a little, it's like a family memory. Everybody's grew, there's always one wild one. It's part of the, it's, it's in their heritage. That's what the biggest part of London was. And the reason that is, is because back was the thirties, forties, whenever it was, they used to have elms everywhere. Down Main Street, they said they used to touch. I never saw that. I was, it's wasn't around yet. But then they planted something quick, which is silver maple. The other ones got them little woolly bits. We always put them in airplanes. They're okay in certain places, but.
I don't know if we have. Yeah.
And another one's those little leaf linters. You don't wanna approach your house either.
Have we already made the rules or have you trumped it?
Yeah. So we did this before.
They got a lot of new ones out there.
Amendment.
We've got some new elms down around. You got new varieties that's resistant to that bug. That started out like.
Yes.
Yeah. Some of them go two, three, forty years. Some of them go pretty good.
I scanned those when I had.
Along Kenny. I assume they must be home, but I'm not sure.
We planted a whole bunch of different ones down here. We planted four or five different ones down.
Yeah, I know.
Hello Josh.
Hey.
Some of them are. You can go down Jacob Lane if you know where that's at, don't you? Okay, with those are, yeah, machinos. Elms. Machinos, the Japanese type of elm. And they, they're pretty. They get kinda base shaped and that.
These are kinda base shaped, so it must be, must be elm that run pretty quick and getting pretty thick pretty quick too. But they don't really turn color, do they?
Some of them do. Some of them, some of them just turn yellow and some of them turn all, all shades of rust and gold horn. Some of them can be pretty. Congratulations Josh.
Oh, thanks. Same to you.
Yeah.
And you.
And the looks is not much for fall either.
Yeah.
Yeah, you bet. We'll start without you. He's in.
I think Greg filed for it large and the guy didn't get mayor. He filed for it large, so we'll have him.
So Mr. Clausen?
And he ran for, he's running for mayor. He fought, they haven't said he's good yet.
Yes, you rock, you rock.
What was the guy? His son died at McDaniel.
He's running for.
At large. So him, Greg and me will be running at large. There's only three of us. And there's two people running for fourth.
And you.
And.
Yeah, that's.
Norman's running for third. So we had Norman. It's gonna be one. Do you have agendas yet? Do you have agendas yet?
What's that?
You have the agenda?
Yeah, I have one. Oh, I didn't print extra. I got this from Chris.
Do you want me to run down and you make copies?
Yeah, cause I usually print a ton of them out.
Yeah.
And.
And that's what I go by.
Yeah, I usually, I usually make sure everybody has. I'll tell you, today I had to actually, uh, charge my Chromebook. I never have to do that. Thanks.
That's just a courtesy lady.
Yeah, usually I, usually I copy about eight of them. Totally. I get so busy.
How are you?
Here.
This is it. Yeah, this is it. And I like to have a physical copy so I can mark it and know where I'm at.
Do you have much on tonight?
No, nothing new.
Okay. I didn't think we had any meetings.
Nothing. And then I think we only have one thing that's on the fourth reading.
Tommy didn't bring his chair tonight. Was it, is Rich is okay?
Yeah, I guess he had his last treatment today.
See if I won't be here either?
No.
Did you all hear stuff turned in?
I did.
It'll be a fast movement. There's only four of us here. Can't do anything anyway. My wife went babysitting. We had my kids this afternoon and my son had a meeting tonight. And she went over there and watched their kids this evening.
Okay.
Seems like once you, uh, have kids, you have kids forever. Even in the grown up, you have the kids with the kids.
Introduced myself to him one night. I don't remember his last name.
Keith Young.
Okay, you got a petition before both Mark and he.
So she'll go to.
For the Republicans.
Wow.
But they didn't have to turn them in.
My two, my sons, few grandkids are, next year, be the eighth or sixth. It's a quick last year. Jacob was like here on me and now I have to look up to him. Says we go to fairs and stuff all the time. He was me, I took my grandson with me and now he's gonna read my grandson with the old man.
Fourth ward runs two.
I love him that he's taller than you.
Yeah, he, oh, yeah, he, any voice is capital. We should make it any.
Yeah, that's the end of it.
He's a good kid though. He was counting the days, twenty-second of April.
Yeah.
A year till he'll be old enough to get his permit. So he's counting the year countdown. I said, right, we can wait on that. But he drives the, after the stuff at the place and mows grass for years. He's, he's good at it.
So he grabbed the agendas and we'll get started in six thirty.
Hopefully there's no vacant spots. It's probably at the council and then the mayor. Might just be the mayor, I don't know.
That's gonna grab the, uh, copies of the agenda for everybody when we get started, cause it's six thirty. Does I have it here?
That's great. Okay, thank you.
I like it that they're up on the city's page again. Everything's up there, the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, one more.
Thank you. All front deck, okay. Okay, thank you. Alright.
You? I get the extra copies. Brian gonna be here? I don't know. We just said.
Thank everyone for coming to our London City Council meeting. Please stay and enjoy me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, could you please take our roll call?
Councilman Needs?
Here.
Councilman Peters?
Here.
Councilman Robertson? Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilman Hayes? Councilman Stahl?
Present.
Alright. We do have a quorum this he, this evening. Has everyone had a chance to take a look of our minutes from our last meeting? Alright, any changes, corrections or discussion? Alright, all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Okay. We do not have any public hearings, uh, and no communications or announcements. And we're on to audience concerns. This evening we have David Kell. Hit your name, address, please. Thank you.
David Kell, uh, West County, one of the major here in London. I'm just here to, uh, know if there's been discussions and, um, the MOU between the county land bank and the city is being discussed, uh, so I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I actually, last week, at the Ohio Land Bank Conference, so we got a lot of new information about land banks. Right now, you, uh, Mount Sterling and Plain City are all considering, uh, signing the MOU. Next Monday, Plain City and Mount Sterling will be signing it, uh, and then West Jeff, I'll be working with them to move that forward through their, um, council. Essentially, that's, that's for the county and the city to work together, uh, to, um, again, the point of land bank is not to disrupt the, the private, um, you know, market. It's to, if a property goes through, um, well, there's a few options of how the, the land bank could take on a property. Uh, if it goes through sheriff's sale and is not, uh, purchased through sheriff's sale is an opportunity for the land bank to take that property, wipe away the property taxes. And then, um, ultimately, ultimately, the goal would be to, um, evaluate the property, look at whether, uh, the proper, uh, route to move forward and, and they would work with the community primarily to decide what to do with that property. So if, for instance, demo, uh, was discussion for the property, if it's past the point of use, uh, and the city would like to move forward with demo, the, the land bank would partner with the, with the city to demo that property. And then the goal would be to find a, 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 a new end user for the property, uh, well, there are a couple of options. Could you find a new end user that would then build on the property, a new, uh, new house, if you will, as residence or commercial property. Be somebody looking to build a new commercial building, uh, that could then be back on the, 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 you know, back, be, be back good with, uh, paying taxes into the community. There's also, you know, there are programs out there called, uh, called side lot programs where if a property is, um, you know, demoed and there's a green field, green field left next to it, oftentimes the community will, will approach that next door neighbor to, uh, at a, a small, uh, fee, uh, upfront fee and then an agreement in place, that person would then own that lot, maintain that lot, uh, to ensure it's green space left in the community. There's other programs which are much farther, you know, much more, much more advanced, uh, like a Stark, Stark County Land Bank or, uh, Summit County. These types of land banks have been around for a while. Uh, they do rehab programs. They would, you know, uh, after going through sheriff's sale, take on a property. Uh, if it could be rehabbed, they would work with, with an individual, sell a property. Average land, uh, land bank owned property goes for fifteen to twenty thousand here in the state of Ohio. An individual would purchase that property through the land bank, rehab that property, and then that individual would sell it or rent it out to somebody, uh, again, making it a productive property in the, in the community. So, um, you know, we are at a point where we incorporated, uh, as a five oh one C three, uh, back in October of twenty-two. Uh, again, similar, I mentioned CIC's last time I was here. If you look at, uh, the revised code seventeen twenty-four, uh, that same language, CIC is basically applied to the land bank. Land bank, uh, one of the main differences is, again, if a property goes through sheriff's sale and is not, so the property, land bank does have an opportunity to, you know, take on the property, uh, and again, there's that option to wipe away the taxes and then sell that property to an individual or group that would be investing in the community. Before I, I know I'm talking a lot. I'm trying to think of anything else I'm, I'm missing, um, you know, properties can be donated to the land banks. So if somebody, if there's a family, an absentee owner that's, you know, is lived down in Florida, they have a property that's become maybe a nuisance or there's things going on with it, um, rather than, um, continue to deal with that issue there. The land bank could work with that individual that had that property donated and then, um, there would be some tax benefits to, uh, an individual for that too. So, you know, there's a lot of options. We are young, um, typically from what I've learned, um, Ross County probably is what I would do. And the city of Chillicothe contracts with Ross County to run their land bank, uh, but Ross County, they're pretty new as well. And, um, they primarily do demos and side lot programs, which I envision this is what the land bank would do initially. And as we grow the organization, we would move into maybe rehabs and things like that. So I know that's a lot, um, I'd be welcome to answer any questions. Again, this is, like I emphasized last time I was here, this is a partnership, um, you know, we're looking to partner with the city, work with the city. Um, and those dollars that are with the land bank, they don't go anywhere else. They, else they would stay with the land bank, be used by the land bank to become more active with potentially purchasing properties, um, that, um, you know, individuals may want to, um, sell to the land bank. That doesn't happen very often, but sometimes land banks do buy properties at sheriff's sales. There's a lot of flexibility there. And again, it's similar to what a CIC is. Uh, it's just got little different powers within it, so. Welcome to answering any questions. It's, you know, there's sixty-six counties, so two thirds of the counties in the state of Ohio have a land bank. It's not likely to be, you know, uh, pioneers in this. It's, it's a well-established program in the state of Ohio, so. Any questions? I know I rambled a lot.
Questions?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So I had a couple of questions. I'm, I'm really glad you're here to answer these, Dave. One of my first questions was how is this funded and is there going to be any cost to the city now or later? So what you just mentioned, um, about partnering with the city on demolition, is that gonna be a cost to the city?
Um, should not be. I mean, there could be, I mean, that would be the discussion and as properties come to the land bank, but, um, we're not gonna force you guys to give us money. So, you know, um, county commissioners have said they would be the initial funder of the land bank if we get to that point. Also, uh, new round of brownfield funding is most likely to come out with this new budget, about five hundred million potentially. Those programs prefer that land banks receive those dollars. So whatever dollars are allocated to a county like Madison County, those dollars would funnel through this, the land bank and then we can use in the city of London. Or, you know, we're, I know that Jonathan Alder is interested in maybe demoing their school up in, up north. We're having a meeting next week about it. Mount Sterling's very intrigued with the dollars that could come in through that program to help to clean up their community. So, um, I, you know, the, I, I go back to Ross County because that's the one I kind of gravitated towards because I feel like they're similar, you know, kind of new rural county. They don't use DTAC and another, um, another source is DTAC dollars from the treasurer's office for delinquent, uh, properties. Um, there's fees collected through that. Stacy doesn't, the treasurer does not want necessarily to use those dollars and that's okay. Ross County does not, at this point in time, two years in, does, does not use those dollars. They primarily go after grant dollars, whether it be through the state or other opportunities to fund these things that I'm talking about. So is there a potential? Maybe. That's not our goal. I mean, and, and again, we're not gonna strong arm you guys to give us money for it. That's not what it's about. I think we're gonna focus on going after the state dollars to help demo projects here in the county or do other things with, with the land bank.
Well, it made me, I actually did read through this. So in article four, allocating cost and sale proceeds. So it kind of indicates the city also bears cost, uh, but, but it looks like all the proceeds go to the county. I mean, I just wanted to know that if we do have cost or we expect to have cost, if, if properties are purchased there.
Good. I, that, that's not our goal. I mean, our goal again, right now is to go after the state dollars and have, you know, uh, look at other, you know, the county has said that they would give dollars to get this, this stuff as well. Again, we're looking to do a partnership. We're not gonna do anything to, uh, try to jeopardize this relationship. We've, the county have been trying to continue to build the relationships with the community. So I feel like sometimes there's a combative nature to, you know, us approaching communities. It's gotten a lot better, but I feel like, you know, there, there's this thought that we're trying to steal money from the local communities. That's just not the case.
Well, what your goals are and what is written could be a little bit different. That's why I ask. And this is a written memorandum of, of understanding, which is gonna be the guiding principle of how this works later on.
Right.
And if it says that there could be cost.
Could be.
Yeah, okay.
That's.
And how's, how's, how's the board set up? How many members are on the board and how's that set up?
We have seven board members currently. Uh, you, by statute, you have to have the, uh, the treasurer and two county commissioners. We have, uh, Mr. Castle, who serves as the largest, um, municipality. We have Ms. Trainer, who serves as a, another representative from the city of London, who also, uh, has real estate background, which is required by the statute. And then you have, from an attorney's perspective. And then you have Mr. Drake, council president from, uh, Mount Sterling. And then you have Mr. Stanford, who is the economic development coordinator for Plain City.
Okay. I did see, you addressed this a little bit, um, Licking County. So I was on that, the.
Ross County.
No, Licking County is what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I looked at Licking County, how they get funded. They actually have a three percent delinquent tax assessment that goes to them to help fund them.
That's the DTAC dollars I mentioned earlier.
And, and there's no desire to do that here at this point.
Ms. Ms. McKenzie has said she has not desired to do that and we respect that. In our agreement with the county, there is language that says may, which is pretty common agreement language, so there may be an opportunity to use DTAC dollars. So there may be an opportunity to use DTAC dollars, but again, that's not our intention at this point in time.
And it looks like this is set up a little difference for residential and commercial properties. And residential, if I'm not mistaken, in residential properties, the city does have kind of a right of first refusal. But in commercial, it doesn't look like they do, and that's controlled solely by the land bank.
Correct.
Okay. And it also mentions, um, nonprofit, you can work with nonprofit and for-profit groups.
Correct. Yes, that's, for instance, if an individual. So if there's somebody who is looking to make an investment in the community, that's a private investment individual or group, um, you know, and they, you know, if we have properties that, if you check out other land bank sites, they oftentimes have listings of properties that are up for sale, um, you know, there is an option for an individual to buy the land, uh, a land bank-owned property through that. Also, the land bank could seek out individuals. If there's somebody out there that, um, you know, has a good track record in the community and is responsible with development in, in the area, the land bank could seek that person out and say, hey, we have this property. Are you interested? That's, again, the flexibility of the, the organization under the statute.
Because it's not a government agency.
Correct. Yeah. And there are partnerships like Habitat for Humanity as well, partners with land banks. So, yeah.
But I, I think there's probably the perception that if you can go seek out your brother to do this.
In theory.
Right. I mean, there's the perception that if you can go seek out an individual, it doesn't matter who it is, but there's always, there could always be the perception of, well, they did that for him because they're buddies, you know.
In theory.
It, it's just a matter of perception. I'm not saying that's going to happen.
I know, I get it.
I'm just saying it could happen. And then looking, so I, my biggest concern was that the city had only thirty days to make a decision. And I didn't, in the initial part of this, I didn't see where there was a guideline on how the land bank has to know the fight in city and when. But I did find down that I think it's ten days. I think the land bank makes the decision as a group on a property, and they have to notify the city of that within ten days. And then the city, I think, only has the remainder of the thirty days to make that decision. Or even if it is thirty days, if, if that would ever have to come to city council, that eliminates three readings. It would always have to be an emergency because we would never have time to have three readings and meet their guidelines. So that takes that out of our hands no matter what. And, and maybe that's okay. I'm just, I just want to point that out because I don't know that that should be that way. And then curbside walks and gutters, um, this is on, um, Exhibit B. Um, where it, it talks about whether those things have to be done. And then the city has to give an assessment. If they fail to give the assessment within ten days, the land bank can do whatever they want at that point. And the city is stopped from interfering with the demolition unless the land bank otherwise agrees in writing. So again, there's kind of a shortened time period here that the city can react to this.
Would the city in theory want to take on these properties? If we're taking these through the process of seizing them, if it's a dilapidated property that has no further use, would the city want to take that on, handle the maintenance, the insurance, all those things? Or would you ra, would you rather go to the land bank to take on those responsibilities? Because that's an added cost that I would not want on the city. And an added responsibility because you would have to potentially maintain the site, mow it, um, you know, clear it out. Um, you know, there's going to be hazards. You may have to have, you know, tape off the property. So I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, I think in theory, you could look at it saving the city a hassle. I mean, I would ask you, would you want to take a property on as a city to take that? Or would you rather land bank have a property in that state of situation?
Well, you didn't, you're, you're answering a different question, but I'll answer yours. And that is, there could be property that the city said, absolutely, we want that property because it connects right to the bike trail here, and we can do something for that. We want that property. We make that choice because we have that time period to do that.
Right. And we will work with you on that. I mean, every situation is going to be, you know, again, there's a cooperation with this. There's going to be working with you to, to ensure that if the city wants to be involved, we would make sure that that happens. Again, we're not trying to be the bad guy coming into situation. We're offering an agreement with the city for this.
Quite honestly, overall, I really like the idea. I think, I think it works really well. But I'm just looking at these questions that if we don't look at these and address these now or even have discussion about these now, it all moves forward as this will be, and it'll be forever and ever because it'll never be readdressed, I don't think. Maybe it could be in the future if something has to happen.
Right.
But overall, I'm in favor of it because I think it could, it could benefit an awful lot of people.
Good.
And a lot of neighborhoods.
Okay. Yeah, that's good. That's good. I, I, again, I, um, you know, we're, we're trying to bring tools to this community to help it out, clean it up. Um, you know, and, you know, as Henry mentioned, we had, did have discussions, you know, new years ago. We, you had to include the county treasurer. Um, at the time, Donna did not know too much about land banks, and she just said it wasn't for her. Um, you know, Ms. McKenzie went to a land bank conference with me. She was on the fence after taking over Ms. Landis, and she, you know, bought, you know, bought into it after going to that conference. And we're working with, you know, talking to the, you know, the existing land banks and those, uh, you know, those attorneys that work with the land banks and kind of eased any concerns that there were. So, absolutely. So, no, I appreciate your questions. I just, sometimes I feel like, not just here either, just, and I get it, there's, there's always that unknown. But we're, we're trying to, again, we've worked to build those relationships with the city, with the villages, um, to bring programs that will help ultimately bring benefit to the community, to be honest with you. So, I get it though. I get it.
Um, and this is just how you would expect it to happen. Some of the county's land bank sites are very comprehensive, have a lot of information, show their fiscal reports for the last three years.
Mm-hmm.
Would we expect as a city council to get an annual report on the land bank on what, you know, how many properties that you've taken on, what you've done with it?
Yep. We do annual reports, um, you know, and basically kind of overview what, what the activity is. Absolutely.
I, thanks for answering the questions.
No problem.
Any other questions? All right. Like I said, I brought this about eight years ago, uh, because I was very interested in it because I know it's a very useful tool for cities, and it can help you to clean up a lot of properties and make a lot of properties actually useful. Uh, you have a property sitting there, no property tax being collected on it, uh, no homeowner living there that has a job and works to contribute to the income taxes for a city. But this does something about that. So it is a, and from what I hear and what I understood before, it's a very flexible tool. So you have so many different guidelines, uh, so you can take it basically on a property by property basis uh, to see what helps the community, partner with the cities on that, and, and it benefits everyone. So it's like a win-win situation because everyone gets to work together because the guidelines are so flexible.
And to your point, and, and Mr. This is my easier little bit, there's going to be, there's not going to be any rush to, 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 you know, take on these properties. So there's going to be a lot of conversations about it. Because, yeah, again, I'm using the term in theory. I guess that's the, 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 um, what's the word I'm looking for? It's the, the theme of my discussion here. But in theory, uh, you know, if it, if it does not go through sheriff's sale, um, that means people don't really want it, right? So, you know, we're, then have to evaluate to see if it makes sense for the land bank to take it on. And so there's going to be a process here. We're not just going to jump at every single property. It's going to be calculated to see how, how the best work, help the community in part with, you know, how we partner with you guys to make it happen.
I did read the minutes, I think it was Logan County, where one of the villages in Logan County was absolutely begging the land bank to help out, and they said, no. That was their choice. But it's, it further read like it was a commercial property, and the abatement costs were going to be more than the land bank wanted to take on. The village said, this is going to break us if we have to do it. So, you know. I'm sure there has to be that partnership in there.
Yeah. And the best, the best situation that I could think of, what, where we wish that we had a land bank, I know I'm taking a lot of time here, but.
You sure are.
Clark, Clark, Clark Street down in Mount Sterling, the old conveyor belt, the old Versa building. Um, that had been sitting there vacant forever, delinquent taxes, gone through numerous sales. Uh, there was a brownfield issue. Um, if we had a land bank in place, the land bank could have gone in, taken that on, gotten brownfield dollars, cleaned it up. Instead, uh, Mr. Alcop bought it, um, at auction. Uh, this was actually at an order sale, which is past the sheriff's sale. I think he bought it for like four, fourteen grand, maybe. I'm not sure. Um, and we had to partner with him to clean up that property where, so he took on a liability with the, the cleanup and everything like that, where if the land bank was in place, it would have kind of helped the process a little bit. He could have potentially, you know, ultimately gotten the property anyways because we, we understand his success in the community, what he had. Um, so we would have seeked him out, but it would just been a different process to him obtain that property and clean up as well. So. Wish we would have had. That was back in fourteen. Probably right around the time we were discussing it. So. Anything else? Sorry to bore you guys.
No, definitely appreciate it because, uh, you know, people have lots of questions about it. It's a brand new process.
Yep.
Uh, coming into the county.
Right.
So I, you know, I, I welcome it. So, um, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Tommy Boyd.
All right. Tommy Boyd, forty eight North Union Street, London, Ohio. Um, sorry, I have to add one more. So my question for just the land banks, I knew I was popping up here, so I leave for now. If we have one of these properties that are sold off, you know, somebody in Florida, whatever else, for the tax benefit of it, and it has tenants in it, do you maintain those tenants and continue rentals, or what happens there?
The land, the land bank does not ultimately want to own the property. The land bank is to facilitate some sort of the seizing of property in the proper way and, um, and then finding a buyer. It does not want a whole property.
Transfer.
There's no name and landlord, things like that. So, um.
No.
So its goal is not the, is the whole property to be leased.
So do you buy properties or get properties that have tenants in them ever?
I've not had one yet. This is new. Um, I don't think that would be something that would go into, um, into it in theory, but I, I don't have that experience yet to answer that question.
All right. Yeah, just evictions is the only thing I'm kind of concerned about there.
Yeah, I would.
We do have a lot of property that is owned by people out of state. And so that's my only concern with that part, but thank you much. Um, all right. Onto the next part. Unfortunately, Bill's not here. So I'm here asking again, the turn on, going on to Lafayette Street from Elm Street. I believe that's how we want to determine. With that having a sewer there and the curb being broken above the sewer, does this help give us any ability to get that fixed?
We would fix, if the sewer is broken, we would fix the sewer. It's the city's policy not to take care of curbs and sidewalks that are property of a property owner. It would be solely their responsibility.
If, so is that the curb?
If we did fix it, let me, let me preface this. If we did fix it, we would bill the property owner if it had to be fixed in the process of doing that. Unless we destroyed something, then we'd fix what we've destroyed. But if it was deteriorated and it had to be fixed, we would, I would assume we would bill the property owner or assess it to their taxes.
All right. Um, so my next one would be, what is our difference between sewer grates without the metal caps and the ones with them? Such as that one on that corner that has no metal cap on it? And you go down the rest of the street and the rest of them have a metal cap on it where the curb is?
I would have to defer that to Mr. Long. I don't have an answer for you. That's not my expertise.
All right. Because that's where I see the difference there. You know, if we neglected to put in a covering to help protect that from happening, I think that would still fall back on us, unfortunately. Um, other than that, I'm sure we have plenty more to talk about tonight. Hopefully it gets brought up. But otherwise, that's all for me. I'm just checking in. Oh, actually, nope. I did have one more I remembered. Out at the dog park, they were hoping to get some traffic stop parking strips in front of the trees. I guess we had somebody else run into one of the trees. And so they were just seeing if somebody could get any of the, just parking stoppers there. Something to give them a curb so they're not going up into it. Thank you much.
All right. Thank you. All right. On to our committee reports. Uh, Mr. Eath?
Well, we were going to have a service meeting last night, but it was canceled. I'm not sure why, so I don't have anything to report.
Do we know why the service meeting was canceled? What's that? Lack of a quorum. Okay. So there's our answer. So then, uh, the next one is scheduled just for next, uh, month, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let's see here. Mr. Peters?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Head?
I have nothing new. Um, the next safety committee meeting is this coming Tuesday, May ninth.
Ninth.
At five o'clock in the meeting room over here.
Okay. And Mr. Stoll?
He didn't mention, but the finance committee meeting is Monday, May eighth at six P M.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Onto our city official reports.
All right. Good evening. Thanks to everyone for coming out. Um, I would like to start off by thanking everyone for their support at this past Tuesday's election. I'd also like to thank everyone who voted for the fire levy. Currently, the levy is losing by six votes, but there are still provisional ballots and possibly mail-in ballots that could swing the vote. We should know more in the next couple of business days. With that being said, if the levy does end up on the wrong side of the vote, we will be prepared for Monday's finance committee meeting. We have been meeting a lot, especially the past couple of days, finalizing a plan for the department. Mr. Castle will be presenting one or two plans to the finance committee on Monday, May eighth. At that point, it will be up to city council on how to proceed. I have been meeting with some developers the past couple of weeks about housing, and it does look like we have a few new projects that may be on the horizon soon. The first is for houses. The second is for a couple, uh, condos. So two different areas for condos, and finally, finally, a possible apartment complex. They have been given a lot of information, a lot of information. Um, one big thing was utility maps, so we hope that we'll be getting some of their plans soon so we can start the process. Past couple of weeks have been busy, and I've been able to attend a few events. Madison, Madison County Women's Republican Central Committee held their annual scholarship dinner. So congratulations to the four individuals who were awarded college scholarships. Very, very bright young adults, and they read their essays. They were fantastic. They did such a wonderful job, very good at public speaking, and the essays were wonderful. So. The Special Olympics versus the London Safety Services volleyball game was held last Thursday. Uh, once again, the LPD and the fire department took a lot of losses, but they were able to get one win, which brings their total to two and twenty-four lifetime against Madison County Tigers. So thank you to those who set that game up, and, um, thank you for letting me and Iceman be the referees. Along with my son Maddox, we attended the Child Abuse Prevention Carnival. Thanks to all the providers, volunteers, and groups that made that happen. It was very, very busy, a very busy event. Um, and everyone really seemed to be having a great time, especially all the kids. That night, we also attended a glow zone party, which was hosted by the Teen Leaders of London, which is T L O L. I want to thank them for having us out. It was a little chilly out there, but still a lot of fun. On Monday, I had the wonderful time at the London Middle School Life Fair. The kids were very engaged, asked a lot of great questions. This is a wonderful event, showing the youth possible career opportunities and paths. I appreciate everyone who came out and presented for the kids, and especially the London Police Department and the Division of Fire and EMS for being there, which is always a very busy booth at this event. The same day, I had the honor of attending National Signing Day for the seniors at London High School. So I want to wish everyone in the class of twenty twenty-three the best of luck in their future endeavors. I know they'll make us all proud, and, um, I believe they are finalizing their plans for the senior parade, which will be coming up at the end of the month. Today was National Day of Prayer. I attended that. Um, the Sisters of the Lord put that on at the courthouse. A lot of pastors, a lot of locals, a lot of people were there. Another great event, powerful event. So thank you to the Sisters of the Lord, especially Brenda Russell, who, who always invites me to that. Um, thanks to Mayor Ray Martin. He comes over from West Jeff and, and speaks also. And thank you to everyone who spoke and everyone who attended. Now onto the Molo Fun Fact, which is number forty. I attended the Life Care Alliance Meals on Wheels Volun- I attended the Life Care Alliance Meals on Wheels Volunteer Recognition Luncheon on Tuesday. At the luncheon, they recognized Leah Baird, who is retiring from Meals on Wheels after forty years. Leah is a local resident who began her career at Madison Health, working with the original Meals on Wheels. Then when that was taken over and transitioned to Life Care Alliance, she stayed with the program. I don't know if you know Leah Baird. If you don't, it's, I would be surprised cuz Leah knows pretty much everybody, and she's a staple in our community. Besides everything she does for Meals on Wheels and Life Care Alliance, she is one of the best people around, always willing to help out other nonprofits and volunteer groups when they need some help. Can't imagine how many extra hours she's put in on Meals on Wheels, which is a great organization and do great things for our citizens who are homebound and need meals. So I want to thank her for everything she's done, not just for Meals on Wheels, but for our community, and I know we'll still see her out and about quite a bit. I wish her the best of luck in retirement. Thank you.
Alright, and I do like to mention the uh Life Fair. That is an awesome program that the middle school does. Uh, and they do that for every age group. They get to go in and they go around to the different booths, and it gives them uh just a a shot of what they could be doing after they graduate high school. So they are getting a look at their their future, the potential of their future at an earlier age. Uh, I thought that that would be a really good thing to start to introduce. Uh, originally, we wanted that to be a college fair. Uh, so I actually founded the Life Fair back in like two thousand eighteen, and originally it was just gonna be a college fair, but we thought, you know, some kids don't go to college. Um, so we included uh different businesses, just different aspects of military, things like that. So it is really awesome for all of those kids, and and if you haven't gone before, uh, and unfortunately, I was not able to make it this year, but if you haven't gone before, you really need to see how excited all these kids are about, you know, looking at the possibility of college or working somewhere or doing something uh with their lives after they graduate high school, but they're getting a look at that at a very early age. So I think that that is an awesome program, and I'd like to thank Mr. Belmont uh for continuing that program cuz it is very useful for our community. Alright, let's see here. Anything else? Uh, Rex, do you have anything?
Just one, public service announcement. It is now grass mowing season. Please mow your grass. And anyone who doesn't wish to mow their grass this year, or last year, council passed an ordinance tightening up and charging fees assessed whenever we take care of mowing the grass for those people. So give them a little heads up. We're getting, I got about four or five of them already that's probably getting close to getting their notice, so. Let's mow our grass and keep London looking nice.
Mr. Castle?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to uh also mention about the grass clippings in the road?
Uh, yes, whenever you do mow your grass, if you please do not mow your grass into the road. If you do, that grass then flows down into the storm sewers and can clog our storm sewers. Also, please don't leave your grass on the sidewalks, especially if it's ten inches tall, because this proves to be a trip hazard for people that are walking on the sidewalks. And I would say if someone does trip on grass that's left on there and hurts themselves, that property owner will also be liable for any damages to that person. Okay?
Thanks. In addition to that, the grass clippings in the street can be like ice for motorcycle riders, so you definitely don't want to have that in front of your your home. Uh, Kenneth, do you have anything? Alright, thank you. Alright, on to our old business. Uh, ordinance one fifty-one twenty-two, a motion to read by title or number?
Sue moved.
Okay, actually, yeah, go ahead. In second, please.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance one fifty-one dash twenty-two, sponsored by Rich Hayes, an ordinance, ordinance. Amending official zoning map.
Okay. Uh, Rex, do you have anything new on this?
Hear something from him?
No, I have a, I have a call out to him right now. Um, just waiting for a callback. Um, I don't have any updates than what I gave you guys at the last meeting.
Okay, and then I uh spoke with uh Mr. Hayes, and he said that uh they came to our, and I was there, they came to our finance meeting. Uh, and they were looking at the uh, this is the one they were looking at going with the uh tax abatement after, okay, this is not this group?
No. This is.
The Kenny, okay, alright.
This is Pulte, right?
This is right, okay, this is Pulte, no problem. Alright, so we are going to leave that on as we have. On to uh for our fourth reading, uh Resolution one thirty-five twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
Sue moved.
Second.
Alright, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one thirty-five dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriation.
Alright, these appropriations, uh, I think we're waiting. Yep, alright, thanks, Landon. Yeah, we're good. Uh, so we we've started on one of the fields done at Merrimack. Uh, we've actually had four truckloads of field mix uh delivered. First two went down. We've uh got into the third truckload, kind of putting it down, regrading it out, um, stuff like that. So uh, we're looking at a hundred and two dollars a ton, and we've had about ninety, ninety-six tons delivered so far. Um, we definitely won't get into that fourth truckload or nothing for that field, so we're anywhere, you know, uh sixty-five hundred to seventy-five hundred per field, probably just in field mix alone. Um, we recently just got in all the the stuff we need to put in new base anchors, uh, new pitching rubber, stuff like that, new plate. Uh, there was actually two sets of bases down there in that concrete shed, so we'll be using those bases. Um, so that saved a little bit of money there. Uh, you know, base plug, stuff like that, so we put in a a nice little order, um, you know, from Beacon Athletics, stuff like that. So right now, uh, our plan is to, you know, keep working on that field, get it graded nice, get all the anchors in. Uh, you know, open it up for rental, practice rental, stuff like that. Then we'll move over to Field One there. Um, we'll already have one truckload, at least a field mix. Probably have to order another truckload, maybe two down there to to finish that field. And then once those two are kind of up and going, then we'll kind of move into Park Avenue. Um, so I think that's kind of where we might need a little bit more money is when we move on to the Park Avenue field. Um, so what was appropriated through the Parks and Playground Fund, I I think there's definitely enough there to to take care of Merrimack Field One and Two, so. At the moment, uh, you know, I I either just leave it on or or, you know, until we kind of get to the Park Avenue. Um, and we'll have a better idea of what's left in the fund versus what we might need, so. Okay, I just, yeah, we'll just leave this on.
Thank you. Third reading, uh, Resolution one fifty-one twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
Sue moved.
A second?
Second, alright. Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one fifty-one dash twenty-three, sponsored by John Stoll, a resolution to establish a trap spade neuter return program.
It speaks to itself what it says, and we've talked that. We just can't do anything about it right now. Would you like to say anything?
We can, this is third reading.
Yeah, this is the third reading for this.
Is enough of a pass?
Yeah.
We don't need to suspend.
Yeah, we don't need to, uh, now, did we, any discussion on this one? Because we did have it amended, and that's done.
Right, and the amendment is on here that we can, they've changed the numbers on this.
Okay, and we discussed that last meeting. Uh, do we have any questions for Tammy? Nope, okay, so what are our wishes? Mr. Stoll? What are our wishes?
Do you want to wait a week, Greg, did you say?
No, we're, this is the third reading.
Okay, I moved it up then.
Okay.
No second.
So we have a first and a second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Alright, one fifty-two twenty-three has been adopted. On to Resolution one fifty-three twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
One fifty-two.
Or one fifty-two twenty-three, sorry about that. Motion to read by title or number?
Sue moved.
A second.
Alright, clerk, please uh read the resolution.
Resolution one fifty-two dash twenty-three, sponsored by John Stoll, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Yes, and we changed the amounts of last meeting. Is everybody happy with it? We go ahead and pass it, or you want to wait?
Well, it's the same thing.
It's the same.
We're on the same, this all applies to one fifty-one also, right?
Yes.
Right.
Moved it up.
Okay. And a second?
A second.
Alright, we have a first and a second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Alright, one fifty-two twenty-three has been adopted. On to Resolution one fifty-three twenty-three, a uh motion to read by title or number?
Sue moved.
A second.
Alright, clerk, please read the resolution.
Ordinance one fifty-three dash twenty-three, sponsored by Rich Hayes, an ordinance amending section four one six of the codified ordinances.
So this will, since Rich isn't here, this will create a maximum allowable speed for any railroad locomotive or railroad car which passes through the corporation of the city limits of limit to be thirty miles per hour. And we may recover from any engineer, conductor, or company violating this section, not less than five dollars and not more than fifty dollars for each offense.
And we discuss this, it'd be similar, well, it's sort of like a uh, uh, what do you call it, small claims court in order to collect the money on this. So, you know, we discussed this before, and we said it doesn't really have a lot of teeth, and it, you know, might, how do you kind of, you know, enforce it or collect the money i- if you do find someone speeding through the town? But at least, you know, we would have, you know, something in place uh as a guideline or a rule of how fast people like trains to come through our city.
I guess the thinking is kind of that we'd have some kind of um recoil, I guess, if if something were to happen and they weren't obeying the speed limit.
Right.
Exactly, but I, as you, as it was mentioned, I don't know that it's really been explained in depth, so I don't know, really know the answer, but if it gives the city legal recourse, especially if there's a derailment, you know, I don't know, you're gonna have the National Transportation Bureau in here saying the train was going eighty miles an hour at that time, or whatever. But if that gives us a legal recourse and it makes the people feel a little better that we're slowing trains down, so maybe it doesn't happen here like it did East Palestine.
Right. And uh, Mr. Castle, do you have anything to to add to this? Nothing, okay. And this is our third reading for this, so what are our wishes?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, first and second for adoption. Clerk, could you please take the roll call?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Alright, one fifty-three twenty-three has been adopted. On for our second reading, Resolution one fifty-five twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
Sue moved.
A second.
Alright, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one fifty-five dash twenty-three, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, a resolution designating the Madison County Land Reutilization Corporation to act on behalf of an incorporation with the city pursuant to sections five seven two two zero two to five seven two two dot one five of the Ohio Revised Code and authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement to facilitate the effective reutilization of nonproductive land situated within the corporation limits.
So this is uh what Dave Cale was speaking to. Uh, this involves the city entering into contract with the county for the land reutilization program. And he went through that pretty thoroughly. This is a resolution to agree to be in contract with the county, the city and the county to be in contract.
Alright, and this is our second reading on this one. Alright, on to ordinance one fifty-six twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
Sue moved.
Second.
Alright, we have a first and second. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance one fifty-six dash twenty-three, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, an ordinance amending section fourteen seventy-nine of the codified ordinances.
Uh, so this would incorporate or amend the ordinance to add uh this into our ordinances for the city to participate in the um land reutilization program.
So those go together. Uh, and like I said, we've already discussed this, so no further questions here. Alright, and we do not have any new business this evening, so on to roundtable. We'll begin with uh Mr. Stoll.
I would thank you, Mike, for showing up. Thanks, Mike, for voting. And hopefully in a few days, uh, our levy will pass. If not, we'll be working on getting something done. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Hitt?
Uh, the safety committee meeting is the ninth in the meeting room over there at five o'clock. Um, just, uh, hopefully it's a nice weekend. I think it's supposed to be, so enjoy the weather this weekend.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Peters?
I have nothing.
Alright, Mr. Eads?
Well, it's a little disappointing. The fire levy didn't pass. There, I know there's still that chance between the provisional ballots and the mailed in ballots. Um, so I'm hopeful that that happens. However, I'm afraid that even if it passes, it's gonna take a while to collect that money, so we may still be faced with having to look at something, some type of stopgap measure in the meantime, because they can't collect all that money upfront, you know, it's still only gonna be half a year. Um, so first of all, I want to make sure that I invite every council member to the finance meeting, because I think we're gonna have to have some discussions. And I've been giving this some thought. And what answers would I want to know before we make a decision on Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C that we haven't seen yet? So I'm gonna, I'll share these with you. I brought one for everyone, but some of the things that I would be concerned with would be how much income do we have from what sources, what did we have last year, what's projected this year? And then looking at the expenses last year, and this includes looking at the north station expenses and the south station expenses and our loans and debt service and all of these things that we have to worry about. I just did a worksheet because I want to be able to sit here and look at this, because if this doesn't pass, we're gonna have to fill a gap. And one of the, well, the first meeting that I sat in Finance, Safety Service Director Castle said that the Fire Department was gonna be short eight hundred thousand dollars. And I think that projection was by the end of that year, last year. However, we had eight hundred thousand dollars of federal money, we'll call it COVID money, that we had sitting here that we applied to the Fire Department, and that got them through that. We don't have that anymore. So I think that the only way to properly make a decision, because we have to make a decision on one of their plans or our own, is to sit here and do a worksheet and look at these numbers and see what makes sense. I will suggest right now that we had two hundred thousand dollars put into the budget, just kind of slipped into the budget for a building that's not being built. The first thing I'm gonna suggest that we do is take that two hundred thousand dollars and apply that to the Fire Department. That two hundred thousand is not gonna be used to build a building this year, so we, it's, it'll be a good use for that. So that I, but I I hope that everybody here comes up with some of their own suggestions and ideas, and if you want a copy of the worksheet, at least so you can maybe make notes on maybe how we're gonna close the gap. Maybe you have ideas. I want to share that with everyone. You can throw it away if you want, but I'm gonna have mine. I just want to be able to work through it. And and I hope that we can find a way to do this without closing the south station. I'll be adamantly opposed to that. We waited our whole life to have a south, to have a fire truck on the south side of town. If we can't figure a way to do this out of the general fund without closing the station, I don't think we're doing our jobs. So I'll be adamantly opposed to that. I'm just letting you know that now, just how I feel about it, and I just hope we can get this done and figure out how to do that for this year, knowing that whatever we do now is probably only gonna be for this year, because next year, if it doesn't pass later, if we do it again, that animal might be a bigger animal than what we have to deal with now. Thank you very much.
Alright, and I do agree with you that, uh, you know, we do need to make sure that there are some plans in place. Because closing that uh south station, I don't think that that should even be an option. That's on the table, but I know that was mentioned at one of our finance meetings a few months ago. Uh, you know, one of the main reasons for succeeding from the E M D was one of the things that they had uh in place was that, okay, now we'll have a a station on the south side of the track, so we have both sides of the tracks covered. So this would even be to go backwards from from some of the reasons that uh that split was made in the first place, along with, you know, removing that uh the the tax, you know, for people that was also given uh at that time. So I, you know, I would one hundred percent be against uh closing that station and laying people off as well, so I hope that. So I hope that there's more plans in place, uh, than that. And then too, I would like to, uh, thank everyone that did go out and vote and exercise your, uh, right as Americans. Like I said, a lot of people died so that we could have that right to vote, so, you know, thanks to everyone who went out and voted, even though it didn't turn out in my favor, at least you voted. Uh, and it was a large percentage of the city that, uh, came out and, uh, you know, showed how they feel about things, so. But I wish there were more people that went out and voted, because there's, you know, still was kind of small numbers for the amount of people that we have in the city, so, I do wish that more people would exercise their, their rights as free Americans to vote. So, hopefully we can get all those numbers increased in the future at the polls. So if there's nothing else, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sue moved.